I call this meeting of October 26th of Erie County Council to order. You will please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Councilman Schenck, could you please lead us in the optional prayer this evening?
Yes, I know that we're running late. I had a five-minute presentation, so actually, I'm kidding. We're going to keep this short and sweet. Ronald Reagan stated, "The future doesn't belong to the faint-hearted, it belongs to the brave." I yield back.
Thank you, Councilman Schenck, for those words of wisdom this evening. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Schenck?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
Before we begin the citizens to be heard, a portion of our meeting, we're actually going to go out of order a little bit because we do have a very special presentation from a very special member of our community tonight, and that is Kendra Kuharsky. Kuharsky. I knew I was going to blow it. Kendra Kuharsky, who is the first female in French Creek Council to receive her Eagle Scout. She is a member of Councilman Horton's district, so Councilman Horton has a special presentation from council tonight. So, Mr. Horton, I will turn it over to you and Mr. Smith for the further presentation.
Kendra, would you join me, please? I just said I'm not excited about this. You know, my mother was a big mother. She was a scout when my father did lead the scouts as a young. Mr. Smith is going to read this to you, but I want to commit it to you. I thought you're the first female woman, young woman, that I know to be an Eagle Scout. I've met several Eagle Scouts before.
Excuse me, Councilman Horton. Just so they have it on the tape, could you?
My most favorite Eagle Scout today is Charles Rush. I think I have a good favorite. So, I was going to ask Mr. Smith to read, but I think I'd like to make a summary. And congratulations to him. And I would ask your mother to join us, but I know she's captured this crowd only. I wish she should join us because I know, I happen to know that if you don't get this by yourself, I happen to know that the parents have to be involved in this. I happen to know that you have to have a mother or son, an adult, to support you. So, Ma, inasmuch as I'm going to present this to Kendra for all of our work, this really goes out to you and the entire family and your entire scout group. And greetings. Whereas Kendra Kuharsky made history as the first female Eagle Scout in French Creek Council, achieving her goal in spring of 2021 and officially recognized in October 2021. And whereas Kendra, Kendra at age 14, is the second youngest scout to rank as Eagle Scout in Troop Thirty-Seven chartered at St. James Parish. And whereas Troop Thirty-Seven Scoutmaster and proud mother, I knew it was in there, Bridgette Kuharsky attests to Kendra earning 47 merit badges and achieving the rank of Life Scout. And whereas Kendra's Eagle Scout project consisted of refurbishing the women's public restroom at St. Nick's Grove, managing 20 labors, remodeling pressure washing, and painting the building, organizing and submitting appropriate paperwork. And whereas Kendra has demonstrated her commitment to excellence, her high character, and her devotion to singular achievements, it gives me a privilege to read this letter. Now, therefore, we, the undesigned members of county council, unite with our colleagues on Erie City Council with Kendra's parents, Bridgette and Paul Kuharsky, French Creek Council, Troop Thirty-Seven, friends and fellow scouts, and commending Kendra Kuharsky on the receipt of Eagle Scout rank. Her dedication to serving the community, her display of civic duty, and her exemplary leadership which prepared her to be a sound future leader. In witness whereof, we have set our hands on the seal of Erie County this 26th day of October 2021. It gives me great pleasure to present you with this citation. And we are proud of you just as a member of our community. And so, outside of your family, you're a member of, you have a bigger family, and it's called Erie County. And thank you for being such a great representative of what young people should and can be in Erie County. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Ma.
Thank you so much.
So, uh.
On behalf of all of our colleagues, congratulations to you. Job well done. And I also equally want to send congratulations from our colleagues on Erie City Council, who certainly wanted you to be aware that they recognize your achievements as well. So, congratulations once again. Next on our agenda is the hearing of the public. If you, as many of you know, if you have called in and are on the agenda before it's printed, you receive five minutes. We will certainly make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. If you did not call in to be on the agenda, you will receive three minutes. And first on our agenda this evening with five minutes is Freda Tepper. I will begin your time when you come up. Please say your full name and your municipality.
My name's Freda Tepper, and I live in Erie. And I provided from our Leopold a letter concerning the Human Relations Commission ordinance. I was a member of the advisory committee. My term expired, and I didn't elect to be reappointed. I was going to say that the website is much improved over how it had been, but I am afraid you'll hear from one of the later commenters that it's not uniformly accessible. I would encourage the council to table the ordinance, and I believe they have in mind to do that at this time, but I would also encourage them to table the bylaws. There's some problems in the bylaws, in my opinion. The bylaws seem to give a huge amount of power to the executive director. They actually give the executive director an inordinate amount of budgetary authority, and I can't quite tell to whom the executive director would be accountable. It also requires the concurrence of the executive director to amend the bylaws, which seems rather amazing. And basically, it turns the commission and the advisory council into something that is accountable to the council and the executive director. It just doesn't seem right to me. So, I really would like that to go through the same kind of scrutiny that the attorney was going to apply to the ordinance. I do want to bring to your attention that the ordinance uses the terms handicap and mentally retarded. These terms do not belong in any document that is the product of Erie County. Both of these terms are out of use. The Social Security Administration stopped using mentally retarded in 2013, possibly Yeah, that's most of what I want to say, but I really went on the advisory board with a lot of good intention, and I found it to be not a welcoming environment. We were meeting on a two-month basis, finally. We never met once after the pandemic, and as you can see, we're meeting in person now. I think that had a chilling effect. The one project that the advisory board was going to work on was doing a video about the commission with Mill Creek, and I suggested, why aren't we doing it with the city of Erie? And within 10 minutes of talking to Jordan Lander at the Erie High School, the city of Erie High School has that kind of media capability, but yet we're giving the opportunity to do this video to people at the Mill Creek school system who are already much more privileged than our community than our high school. Anyway, I encourage you to look at the accessibility of our website, the language in the bylaws and the ordinance, and have to vote on the bylaws tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tepper? How was that?
Is it working?
It is, thank you.
Is it on? Okay.
Thank you. If you can give us your full name and municipality, I'll begin your time.
Sure. I'm Natalie Miller from Mill Creek Township. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you, council, for the work you do. I appreciate everything you do to keep our county running in order. I'm here tonight to address the issue of our constitution. On August 29th, 2021, we had a unelected county-level director remove a religious exemption, and this concerns me greatly. I've been following this closely. I've been waiting, watching, listening, waiting for someone to correct this, fix this. I kept thinking, surely someone's going to step in. Surely I won't have to go to a county council meeting and actually say something. But alas, I'm here because, to my knowledge, nothing has been done or said about this. And here we are about two months later. So, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have said something, done something to correct this issue, please let me know. I will humbly apologize. I want to start tonight with our constitution and its importance as a founding document in our country. I'd like to read a portion of our First Amendment. It states that no law shall be made respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Now, the baseless removal of a religious exemption most assuredly infringes on our First Amendment rights. Everyone has a right to take a religious exemption, and no one can just decide one day that because they don't like it, they're going to just remove the option of having a religious exemption. That's simply not okay. This county-level director has no authority on issues of the Constitution nor religious freedom. To my knowledge, she is no expert on religion or the First Amendment, and the Disease Prevention and Control Act of 1955 does not give her permission to trample on our Constitution. So, I'm looking to you, our county council, as well as our county executive, to correct this egregious error. And I think, council, the biggest problem of all is that I have to stand up here tonight and point out that this is a problem. And council, this is indeed a problem. I cannot remain silent. My conscience is bound on the issue of religious freedom, and I know there are many others who believe the same. So, we simply cannot have someone just remove a religious exemption on a whim. In closing, I urge you to do something. I have here a very simple, clear call to action. Firstly, affirm that the actions of Ms. Lyon on August 29th were in error. Secondly, affirm that religious exemptions cannot and will not be removed. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Next on our agenda is Jeffrey McFadden. Please come forward, and you will receive five minutes. And once again, please give us your full name and municipality, and I will begin your time then.
Hello, my name is Jeff McFadden of the city of Erie. Good evening. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of my fellow 911 emergency telecommunications to show support for a proposed revision to the pay plan. I was advised Friday that this was not being brought up this week, instead brought up next month, but I still felt that we needed a voice in this. Increased turnover and persistent vacancies are cited as having a negative impact on the level and quality of service public safety can provide to the community and to the first responders, and on overtime rates and stress levels experienced by existing public safety staff. Full staffing at 911 is 52 telecommunications, including the four telecommunications trainees we have in on-the-job training now. We're at 41. That's 80% of full staffing. Takes about two years for a telecommunicator to be fully capable of serving any telecommunications role. That's Erie, sorry, that's fire, police, EMS, and call-taking roles, dispatch. That's two years to make up a fraction of any lost experience we lose by one person. January 1 of this year, we had 21 telecommunications with more than two years' experience. So, that's already less than half of our full staffing. Today, we have 16. We've lost five this year. By the time your next meeting occurs, the personnel and finance will have lost two Eight of those 21 left. Each took more than five years' expertise with them. We have three people that came back, actually stepped down from management role, and we had two people actually make that two years recently. Of those that left, two were promoted to shift commander, which is basically in charge of the floor, so their expertise isn't so much lost as it's just been redirected. Four of them moved on to higher-paying jobs. On our new hires' first days, they're introduced to the good, the bad, and the ugly of 911. You will change. Take care of yourself. Take care of your relationships, and continue doing the things you enjoy doing. They're also advised not to make big decisions because this job is not for everyone. You may make it a certain point, and it's just, you're done. A lot of the career takes a toll. It's becoming harder for us to take care of ourselves. Some of us have a second or even third job just to make ends meet. Okay? There's little or no downtime. We do have paid leave, but we also have a lot of overtime to fill. And the presence of one begets the need for the other. People taking off requires the overtime, and working too much overtime requires the time off. Sometimes two days off just is not enough. Short of leaving, which we don't want, we really can't escape this reality. Three of those that went to higher-paying jobs started those jobs with a higher hourly rate than our top tier will be under the proposed new pay plan. They have similar responsibilities, some with the just police dispatch, but those responsibilities are generally fewer, and they also have fewer stressors, significantly so. For telecommunications to effectively decompress from work stress, they need to be able to minimize other stresses. Okay? Increased pay plus the eventual retention that might bring will contribute to this. If I don't need a second job, if I could take a long weekend without creating unwanted overtime or be forced into overtime when someone else does that, if I could just have the time and means to do things that bring me joy. As much as this proposed pay increase is meant to address turnover and vacancies, we haven't struggled with hiring. Since the summer of 2019, we've hired 54 telecommunicator trainees. That's two more than minimum staffing since, you know, 2019. Only 25 of those are left, and four of them are currently in on-the-job training. The conversation eventually has to address retention, maintaining a staff capable of passing on their expertise while continuing to also learn themselves. We can't change the job, but with fair and equitable compensation, we'll have more people to back us up and increased means to take care of ourselves. If we can move forward in this, maybe we can start to get some of the lost expertise back. Thank you, Mr. Tepper.
Next on our agenda to speak is Brian Pitzer. Again, when you come forward, if you give us your full name and municipality, and I will begin your time then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Pitzer of Washington Township and a board member of All-Aboard Erie. Thank you for the opportunity to, again, testify before you today. I would like to draw your attention to the front page of Sunday's Erie Times News. The headline reads, "Billions of Dollars Could Come to the Erie Area." The first two sentences of that story read, "Bruce Katz believes the Erie region could potentially see billions of dollars in federal aid and other funding over the next several years, earmarked for broadband internet expansion, housing improvements, roads, bridges, and other infrastructure, and other uses. Katz wants to make sure that local officials have a development strategy for that funding, which includes clear and specific priority projects." I would like to suggest to you that the ordinance before you tonight, dealing with the creation and funding of a rail commission, will help do exactly that, create a strategy for specific infrastructure projects in Erie County. The proposed funding for the commission can best be used as seed money or matching funds for those billions of dollars from federal funding and other sources. What kind of projects am I referring to? The map I have here shows potential passenger train routes between Erie and Pittsburgh, highlighted in red. All-Aboard Erie created this map back in 2014 as we began the process of identifying and evaluating those potential rail lines. As you are aware, there have been, currently are no passenger trains directly between Erie and Pittsburgh, and there haven't been for more than 50 years. Imagine, if you will, then, what it would be like if we had three or four trains daily to Pittsburgh, and imagine if we had another five or six more trains connecting Erie to Boston and New York in the east and Chicago in the west. Further, imagine what it would be like, in addition to these regular passenger trains, if we had true high-speed rail passenger service at 200 miles per hour, connecting the cities of Buffalo, Cleveland, Pittsburgh, through Erie. One might be able to board a high-speed train in downtown Erie and be in any one of those cities in a half hour to 45 minutes. Think of the economic and social impact that could have on Erie. And there are other rail projects that do not involve trains. The Erie Refocus Plan of 2016 called for an iconic connection between Erie's downtown and the bayfront. Two years later, the Urban Land Institute specifically recommended creating a tram or streetcar on State Street from Union Station to the bayfront, which certainly could be called an iconic connection. Now, imagine a citywide streetcar system circulating not just on State Street but in nearly every neighborhood in Erie. Mobility for everyone. We once had a streetcar system in Erie that did just that. There are other possibilities we are just starting to dream about. Imagine the creation of a U.S. Rail Policy Institute, a think tank, bringing together the best and the brightest minds in transportation, and have that institute headquartered right here in Erie, perhaps housed in or affiliated with one of our own institutions of higher education. Also imagine in Erie a Great Lakes Authority, or even better, a U.S.-Canada Great Lakes Authority, similar perhaps to the St. Lawrence Seaway System, that would manage and coordinate all rail transportation and possibly other systems throughout the Great Lakes region. We are just beginning to scratch the surface of possibilities for rail transportation in Erie, but we believe that the ordinance awaiting your vote tonight will be the spark that could ignite any or all of these ideas into reality. Tonight's vote is monumentally important for the future of Erie. Thank you.
Next on our agenda to speak is Michael Furman.
Good evening. My name is Michael Furman, and I'm a resident of the city of Erie. I am the executive director of All-Aboard Erie and the director of the Lake Shore Rail Alliance, which is a coalition of eight advocacy organizations in six states. That's New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, and Michigan. This organization has a depth of knowledge, and our goal is to really petition our elected officials to invest more in passenger rail along the Lake Shore Corridor. I thought I'd tell you a little story instead of going on into reasons. I'm sure we're all familiar with the equation of investing in something. The more we invest something, the higher risk or the higher chance there's a benefit to that. If a person owns, for example, a company, and that person, instead of using that profit for themselves, invests in that company, that company becomes a little bit more resilient to the economic uncertainties of the time. And the same applies to people. If you invest in people or human capital, you provide them educational opportunities so they can acquire a higher skill set, they earn more money. And if they earn more money, they have a tendency to feel more committed to not only their company, but they feel a more connection to their community. And if we have a workforce that has been invested in and has a higher skill set, it attracts more companies. So, investment really is in some ways the bedrock from which a city, a economy, really depends upon. And I think that's really something that we need to think about. You know, recently, and I lost my train of thought there. Recently, we had a situation where, yeah, completely lost my train of thought. I apologize. And I've been working on this for a couple hours, and now I completely forgot, so I'm going to wing it. Investments are key, right? We know this. And I think what you're doing is investing in Erie County future. The Biden administration has unleashed, or launched, a $1 trillion investment in infrastructure. And infrastructure is the baseline from which an economy can move, and that investment's going to pay rich dividends in the long run. If you look at the Clinton administration, for example, they invested hugely in Amtrak in the late 1990s, and so much so that people were talking about high-speed rail, something that Brian had mentioned. And Amtrak was basically charged with identifying high-speed rail corridors, and so they did that throughout the country. One of those corridors was coming out of Chicago and ended in Cleveland. Another corridor came out of New York City, up to Hudson, across the southern shore of Lake Ontario, and ended in Buffalo. Erie County is right between Cleveland and Buffalo, and we were not a part of that equation. We would not see that. And had they moved forward with that investment and actually moved forward with the high-speed rail, Erie County would have been in a terrible position, primarily because we have GE that was our number-one train maker in the country, was right here in Erie. So, it would have been not only in terms of our image, but in terms of our economy, would have been devastating. Now, that may be kind of a one-off, but if you look at what happened just recently in September, Amtrak announced $2.7 billion investment in the eastern part of the cities in Pennsylvania. And they are looking at, for example, high-speed rails, corridors, they're looking at investments in faster trains, more frequency in trains for cities like Scranton, Redding, Harrisburg, and Allentown. This investment will not come to Erie. It will come to the eastern part of our community. And why I bring that up is because the investment that you're making in the high-speed rail is really an assurance that Erie and Erie County is not only going to be at the table of these discussions, but they can help shape the agenda. As this money from the Biden administration works its way down through the local level over the next two years, it's those cities on the eastern part of our community and throughout the entire nation that have well-studied, well-collaborated plans on transit that are going to see that investment. And those that don't are not going to participate in that. They might be withering on the vine, or in this case, we might be stagnant. So, what you're doing tonight in your consideration of a commission that maybe it's a little unclear of what that outcomes are going to be, rest assured that the connections that we have locally, the participations that we have with All-Aboard Erie, the Lake Shore Rail Alliance, and the assurance that we have the resources to be at that table, to shape the agenda, will ensure that the future of Erie County has a stake at that table. And transportation is critical. We need to really think about a 21st-century vision of moving people and commodities in a way that is both economically friendly and environmentally friendly. So, what you're considering tonight is a game changer for Erie County. I picked up what I had forgotten, so thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Furman, thank you. That concludes the citizens that have called in to receive five minutes, but we still will allow citizens to be heard. You will each receive three minutes, and as we have done, please come to the podium and, as you are there, if you will give us your full name and municipality, and I will give you, begin your time then.
My name is Shelley Rhodes, and I'm from Erie. I came to speak tonight regarding the Erie Human Relations Commission and the ordinance, as well as the bylaws. I have heard that possibly they're going to table the ordinance tonight. I would like you to also table the bylaws. It seems rather odd to have one without the other. I kind of consider the ordinance more of the force. I kind of consider the ordinance more of the horse, and the bylaws are more of the cart. Now granted, that does work for a brewery, a distillery, I should say, in Edinburgh, but generally putting the cart before the horse is not a good idea. There are some concerns about language in the ordinance, as alluded to earlier in the other public comments. The term handicap is actually very derogatory. The normal, common term at the moment is person with disabilities. The other current term that is also very derogatory is mental retardation. It has been changed to intellectual disability in a lot of the laws. The state has used intellectual disability for many years. Also, the ordinance needs to reflect our modern times. We have physical spaces that need to be accessible. We also have virtual spaces that need to be accessible. And unfortunately, that is where our world is going. More and more time is spent in the virtual realm, either on meetings, commerce, information access, and those areas also need to be equal and accessible to all, including county government websites and information. You guys do a fairly good job. However, there are definitely some places where there needs to be improvement, one of which is ironically the HRC's website. There are actually parts of it that I'm not able to access via screen reader that are visually easily accessed by everyone else. I am a visually impaired person. I absolutely love the Internet. The ADA was passed 31 years ago. I think it's time for us to make sure that things are accessible to everyone in an equal treatment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
First, I'd like to thank you for all of your service to Erie County. And I know that you do a lot to move our county forward. I'm here to speak about the Rail Commission this evening. If we do not pass this and fully fund this so that we can prove to everyone that Erie to Pittsburgh is viable, we will be left behind. I've seen the plans that have already been drawn up, and a lot of the, and the proposals shut us out. They include us, yes, as we're part of the northern tier, but that's it. Everything goes from Pittsburgh to Erie. So once again, we're out of the opportunity to really give us a good, secure movement with Harrisburg. You've all gone to Harrisburg. You know how difficult it is. There's no longer any flights, and driving is five to five-and-a-half hours to get there. We're kind of looked at as a stepchild. Erie to Pittsburgh would do so many things for our economy. It would for our workers, for all of the workers that we're going to be training through our wonderful new community college. And as things grow and our economy grows and the potential of this rail system, we can't afford to be left behind on this. This is the future. So I encourage you all to vote for this and to vote to fully fund this so that we can prove that it is viable. Personally, I think it should be built right above 79, just like the bigger metropolitan cities put their subways right underneath their streets. So I personally don't see why we can't have rail right over top of 79. But then, that's just me. I'm not an engineer, and all of the experts, we would need to put together a study to say, see, it can happen. Erie can be a leader in this. We can bring an economy and a chance that comes around once in a lifetime. So I thank you so much for your considering this and ask that you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
Hello. My name's Timothy Smith. Live on Sass Fras, city of Erie. Okay, I just had a few questions for council. One is, I understand the county has received substantial federal funds because of the COVID issue. I'm wondering why the county hasn't provided, like, M95 masks and other devices that would protect the citizenry against this virus. I don't think anybody in Erie County has received anything that I know of. But I'm wondering why nothing's been used in terms of the funds to help that situation other than lip service of somebody going on TV and telling how many people died, whatever. I also noticed the real estate tax has raised 4.4% this year. I'm just sort of curious why that would happen. In the last 33 years, real estate taxes have outstripped the CPI by about 37%, even though the Erie County population, I think, has declined a little bit, almost static, but it's declining. You've established a community college, which is going to require, on an annual basis, millions of taxpayer dollars to operate. And I see the first semester is going to be tax-free, or I should say free, for first semester students. Being at taxpayer dollars, what are you doing for the Erie County residents who are students of other institutions like Gannon and such? I could say sort of biased as far as I'm concerned. You also opted to put in a $5 fee on vehicle registrations. How much has been collected and what's being used for? I guess my point is that I'm old, I'm retired, and I can't afford you people, especially the way things are going. So you have to be conservative, cut costs, reduce government size, and use funds prudently. And I would hope that some of the money that came in is going to be used to reduce county debt and such. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? And finally, are there any other?
Just real quick, I'm just going to say that I want to, sorry, Christine Coburn, Summit Township. Sorry. Just real quick, just wanted to give support to what Natalie Miller said about the religious exemptions and that they need to be reinstated. And that's all that I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
Marcella Chigui, city of Erie. Just leaning, lending support to Freda Tucker and Shelley for what they were saying regarding the Human Relations Committee, and also hearing what they were saying about the Alderboard Commission. I also want to support that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? And finally, are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Hearing none, we will continue with our agenda items. Next on council agenda is the approval of the minutes. If I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the minutes from October 12th, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Barber, are there any comments from the county executive or any of her designees?
Not today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Next on our agenda is minutes from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Clear, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 21st, 2021, and we are submitting these items to the agenda for today. Old Business A through E and New Business A through J. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a report from the Personnel Committee. Personnel Chairwoman Mary Rennie, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do. The Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, October 21st. There are no items for tonight's agenda. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your report. And I will stick with you, if you don't mind, as other reports of members of council. I know that you have a report from the Board of Elections, so Chairwoman Rennie, if you would go ahead with that report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to take this time to remind everyone that next Tuesday, November 2nd, is Election Day. And today happens to be the last day to apply for a mail ballot if you are going to apply for one. And for those who are applying for mail ballots at this late date, they may want to consider when they receive it to bring it in directly to the courthouse when they are ready to pass their vote. Room 112 is elections, and bring it directly to the courthouse when we're open. There should be a box outside as well. We are still in need of poll workers and clerks, so I do want to make an appeal for people who would like to contribute their time for those duties. And just to make mention of the number of mail ballots that we have received, so far there is in excess of 20,000 ballots that have been applied for and sent out, and we have received just over 11,000. So we still have a fair number of ballots that we are expecting to be returned, and I would urge voters to return those ballots, fill them out, get them to us at the courthouse. You can bring them in, you can mail them in. And again, just wanted to make notation of those items. All right. I think that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rennie. And on behalf of all of us on council, I want to thank you for the work that you and the entire election board have done and continue to do on behalf of the citizens of Erie County and to the staff and all of the people that work in the election office. It's a vital component to our democratic process, and the work that all of you do is vital to our community. So thank you for that. Next, as chairman, I have just a quick report, and that is to announce that, an exciting announcement, that as we have passed and put in place the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission for Erie County, the commission members have met, they have organized, they have chosen their officers, and they are moving forward with great diligence and enthusiasm. With this commission, as with all other commissions, departments, authorities of Erie County, the Chairman of Council appoints liaisons, and I certainly want to make sure that we have liaisons in place for the remainder of my term as chairman, and so it's on the radar screen as we begin next year anew. I would like to ask Councilman Horton to serve as our liaison to the DEI Commission for the remainder of the year, and Councilwoman Showerman to serve as the assistant liaison. And I hope they are amenable to agreeing to that. The commitment that you've shown to the DEI Commission and the work that is being done by them is, as I've said with other projects, important work on behalf of the citizens of Erie County. And we value your time and your input with that particular body. So thank you for that and for considering taking on those additional responsibilities. Next, we have Old Business, and under Old Business, Item A, we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 82.
So moved. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table the second, Ordinance Number 82, 2021.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilwoman, Vice Chairwoman Clear to table, seconded by Councilman Horton. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
On the motion to table, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I should mention to all of you who are here that by the time we come to the meeting, many of these items have been discussed, particularly in the caucus room before we come into the meeting, and council members are usually ready to vote on these items and ready to make motions to table or amendments to these ordinances. So if we begin to go through this rather quickly, it is because council members have already had an opportunity to do their research and to discuss these items and be prepared to come out here and vote. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 83 in title only, please?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 83, 2021. 2022 Revenue Tax Claim Fee Schedule Revision.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 83, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 87 in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 87, 2021. First 2021 Gaming Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $4,326,531 in fiscal year 2019, interactive gaming fees and approval of community projects.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastatter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
We will be voting on these individual line items. I would like to make a motion to vote on each of these items separately, and that would include the Rail Commission for $1 million, the Hagan History Center grant for $250,000, the Erie County Redevelopment Authority for $395,677, and the Enterprise Fund for $100,000.
Thank you. So we will take each one of these items individually, beginning with the funding for the futures rail commission.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
I do, sir.
Mr. Schank?
Thank you. I went to your guys' press conference. We talked about when I was in the military, zooming all over Germany, and the privileges of getting on a train at exactly 10:01, at 10:01.30, your late of getting on a train at exactly 10:01, at 10:01.30, you're late. So this is something that our country is really lacking, and I tell you, anybody that was ever in the military that had served overseas, and I tell you what, you could go from France to Germany for like 20 bucks. And I tell you, it was really, really a humbling experience and really, you know, enjoyable. And I got back to the States, and I realized how bad our systems really were. So I appreciate where you guys are going, but I got to be honest with you. I'm getting pushed back from my constituents about the amount of money. It always comes down to the amount of money. You know, we're just coming out of a pandemic. We have these gaming funds that we try to reinvest into our community, and, you know, I think we've done a good job. And I'm not saying that I'm not going to support this, because I am, but I just want for the record that I'm not real happy with the amount that we're investing into this. Other cities have tried this project, said not so good so much. But, you know, I will support it, but I want it on the record that I'm not supporting the full million dollars for it. I yield back, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schank. Are there any other comments or questions of Councilman Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, like my colleague, Mr. Schank, Councilman Schank, attended the Union Station Conference, but I have to say that I've been a fan of all aboard Erie. I've been, I've served as the EMTA liaison since I came on council. I'm very familiar with the entity and the very, very good work that they do. I too, I'm uncomfortable with a million dollars. I've expressed it to my colleagues. Is it a great idea? Sure. You don't need any of us to sell any of us, probably not a single person in the county, that we could all be better if we had high-speed rail or even just rail service. But I'm getting pushed back too. The two different pots of money, American Rescue Plan funds and gaming revenue funds, the same constituents, we haven't done anything for youth yet, yet we've spent a lot of money. I think that, you know, they're important and they're worth it, but our policies haven't reflected that. And so I won't be supporting giving the rail a million dollars this evening. I think that we have right now problems. And of course, we always have to have an eye for the future. We're expected to be visionaries. But if not the role of county governor, and I think the role of county government is to look after its people. I think that county government was founded in its Bedrock Foundation and Human Services. I think we've done a lot of economic development, even within the American Rescue Plans Funds that this community is blessed to receive. That money is supposed to be intended to help those most vulnerable and those most affected by the pandemic. I don't think we've done a very good job of it. I believe that we can do better. So I will not support giving a million dollars. I'm very comfortable investing in the rail thing, but not to the tune of a million dollars. There's no scope of work, much to speak of, and we're accountable. So I won't be voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Councilwoman Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have an issue with the price tag of a million dollars, and not necessarily for some of the same reasons that have been stated, but they're similar. I have been in agreement with all aboard Erie, and I applaud the formation of the Lake Shore Rail Alliance. I think Mr. Pitzer and Mr. Furman are two of the finest men to live in this area. I have great respect and admiration for you both, and I think the work that you're doing is very worthwhile. I happen to feel very strongly that the automobile culture that we've created in the USA is combusting in on itself. The expense, the congestion, the pollution, climate change, all of that makes for a good argument for exploring other options of public transit. I'd like to see a viable passenger rail network throughout the U.S. and eventually high-speed rail. And of course, yes, regionally, locally. So we formed a Rail Futures Committee to study what should be done, and close on the heels of that was the proposal for the commission. The problem that I have with the proposal for the commission and the assignment of a million dollars is that the outcomes, the sought, are still quite murky, and for that amount of money, they ought to be pretty well-defined, and I don't believe that they are at this point. And just as an example, Amtrak, and this has been commented on already this evening, Amtrak has made an announcement with Pennsylvania officials and the governor participating in this for expanded service, rail service to other areas of Pennsylvania such as Scranton, Redding, Allentown, Harrisburg, into Philadelphia, where the type of hard data that I would have expected at the formation of this commission should be available. That type of hard data is well-defined for those areas, such as an assessment of the population, a clear stated analysis of defined need, some concrete definition of benefits to be attained, such as number of commuters, the average commuting distance, the average commuting time, make the case for pressing need. And I don't think that we have that or we haven't had it presented. And I believe that the information is out there. I've certainly heard it in presentations or heard similar information in presentations from all aboard Erie. I certainly would support a transit commission, maybe even instead of a rail commission. I don't think, well, let me say this, I believe that you have presented a compelling vision, and it certainly is something that I would love to see happen. But I don't think that the plan and the supporting data is compelling enough at this stage for us to dedicate a million dollars without some reasonable expectation of a corresponding direct benefit for our citizens. If I were, and this is what I ask myself, if I had a million dollars to give to worthwhile projects, and I happen to believe that transportation infrastructure is very important and the, it's necessary, it's needed, but if I were giving a million dollars of my personal money, I wouldn't do it at this time for this project. I would send it back to the drawing board and ask for something a little bit tighter in terms of what you expect to be doing with the money. And for that reason, I don't plan on voting for it tonight, even though I do think it's a highly worthwhile project. I think in the interests of fiscal responsibility, I would like to see it revamped and brought back to council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any other members of council? Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to say, you know, I've actually had some phone calls from my own constituents to push forward with the Rail Commission, not to push back. And I, in my conversations with people, it comes down to the fact that they feel that for the last 50 years or longer, that Erie has only given a half commitment to any project that they ever decide to commence with. And they want something to be done right for the first time. The money for the commission will be creating the exact data. That's a part of the scope that I got to understand. The data that Councilwoman Rennie is seeking is going to be accumulated. It takes money in order to get that data. And as far as the results that I have learned from speaking with Mr. Pitzer and Mr. Furman, that this, in essence, is looking after its people, looking after the people of Erie County. And when I say that, I say that because I think the goal of Erie County government, yes, is social services, but I think we need to be looking to get people off of social services by giving them opportunity, a purpose, and a job, a reason to get up in the morning. We need the creation of hope for the future. That's also a part of what we do here on Erie County. And I yield back. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Woman Clear. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Councilman Rastetter?
I was going to wait till the next ordinance. Or then.
Whatever you choose.
Well...
Or you can give them, you could give the same speech as each one.
I could give it twice. There you go. There you go. I can do that. I think everybody would appreciate it. Yeah. I just want to say that, you know, our job as council people, whether, I hope we know it, whether we know it or not, is community building. Everything we do, human services included, is for the betterment of the community. And that's what this project is all about. We don't have the data that Councilwoman Rennie's talking about because the service has not existed in over 50 years. I don't know if it actually was intended for that purpose back 50 years ago. Probably not. They didn't even know what commuting was unless you lived in Rhode Island or Connecticut. But commuting has been, become a big thing in this country, and yes, I'm sure there are a lot of people that commute to Erie. I know when I worked at the GE 40 years ago, people came in from Ohio and New York and as far down as Mercer at least to come and work at the GE. And I don't know, I haven't gotten one negative reaction, and believe me, I think you've all heard me complain about that, I get a lot of negative reactions out of my district. I haven't gotten one negative reaction when I bring up this subject. Everybody that I talk to, oh, yeah, that'd be great. I'd love to be able to take a train ride up to Cleveland or Pittsburgh or Buffalo. You know, think of all those Bills fans that would love to go up to Buffalo to see the Bills play, or the Steelers, or the Browns. And that's just one day of the week. But I think we need to think about this as a way to create a new attitude, have a new active and intentional approach to the future of our community. If we ignore making goals and remain just passive, we will drift through time, and the events and opportunities will pass us by. You know, I always appreciate the comments and the objections from fellow council people and the public. The public bring a lot of good suggestions and ideas to our meetings. And I don't expect the Rail Commission to be a success in any short amount of time. That's why we're not giving them a time limit. And we need to give them money to work with because it's going to take time. They're going to, and they're going to take that money and leverage it to make more money. It's not just going to be, well, we're going to go spend a million dollars this year and that's the end of it. That isn't what we have in mind at all. You know, they're not going to spend that million dollars and then go home. They're going to use that to make more money, to make this an ongoing effort until the goal is reached. You know, it's seed money to strengthen this new approach, to promote our future. By reminding Harrisburg and Washington, we are here, a part of Pennsylvania that has been neglected for too long, and we are ready with a plan to accomplish our goals, goals that will benefit the whole region and the state, and people that need jobs, and people that need houses, and get them off the tax rolls like Mrs. Clear just mentioned. And, you know, I could go on and on about it. I think, at least I know the council has heard my thoughts on it for quite a while, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But for now, it's getting late, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Rastetter, and I also want to thank you for the work that you did in your committee, in chairing the Rail Committee of Council and working so diligently and expediently. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Councilwoman Shauerman?
Well, I can't be the only one that doesn't say anything.
Well, I haven't said anything.
But I know you will. I think that Kim and Scott said it very well, that we're poised at a time in history to make this decision, and the time is right, and if we don't get in the game, we're not going to be in it at all. And I've heard nothing but support from my constituents supporting this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shauerman. And I'm going to surprise the entire body who is here, and I am going to defer any comments until later. So, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion to fund the Rail Commission at a million dollars, Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
No.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Absolutely. Yes.
Motion passes?
Mr. Smith?
I mean, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Councilman Horton?
Yes. The motion passed, and I want to commend my colleagues for all the hard work that they did, and I'll add my vote, my yes vote, to the floor just for the record.
Thank you, Councilman Horton, and have you recorded that, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready to go on to the next item in which we will vote, which is the funding for the Erie County Historical Society Hagan History Center Digitization Project for $250,000.
So moved. Second.
The motion was made by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the Hagan Center project, Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. The next item in this ordinance is the funding for the Erie County Redevelopment Authority, $395,677 for two projects, one with Impact Quarry and one with the Union City Gateway Project, and I would be looking for a motion for this particular item.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion for the Erie County Redevelopment Authority funding, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
The next item in this ordinance is funding of the Enterprise Development Fund for $100,000. I would seek a motion for this particular item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
For the Enterprise Development Project, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we now have a final vote on Ordinance Number 87? If there are no further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote?
On Ordinance 87, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Remember when I said I was going to reserve my comments for a later time? Well, that time is now. I want to commend my colleagues for the work in this particular ordinance and its passage. But equally as important, I want to commend the county executive and her administration for the collaborative work, the cooperation, and the unity that we showed in moving these projects forward, which are not only transformational, but essential for our community, all of these projects, not any one particular. The rail commission, my colleagues have eloquently described as both complex, confusing, and something that is of utmost importance to this community. And all of that is true. If we miss this moment in time, the moment in time will never come again, not in our lifetime, at least not for another century. The moment in time for us to act on many things is now. The moment in time for us to speak bold, together, in unity as a community, is now. As we come out of this pandemic, beaten, battered, injured, hearts broken, families devastated, the vision amongst us, we have to believe in the hope of the future, in the faith in each other, the belief in our community, with all of us working together. The two projects that we are funding in the redevelopment authority are projects that are essential for two communities in southern Erie County, the Union City Gateway Project, revitalizing, re-energizing, and reimagining, redreaming a new downtown for Union City, a new energy, a new tomorrow. The project that we're talking about with Impact Quarry will not only move the community forward in Quarry, it will start a new industry. It will create access to that industry, vital links, walkability, livability, sustainability, and family stability. It will create a workforce development center that will create a new industry, a new type of utility company, through splicers and hopefully fiber optic broadband. They will first be trained by experts from Georgia who have the certification, who will come here, and they will teach local people to get this off the ground. And then they will train and certify experts here, who will then become part of the faculty of the Erie County Community College, creating a new program within the college, increasing that industry, that hope, that educational attainment, those family sustaining jobs for people in the Quarry area and all of Erie County. Through the enterprise fund, in making investments in this particular area, we're giving money to support projects for minorities, persons of color, women, new Americans, who may not have the opportunities or the financial backing behind them to get loans at financial institutions that others may be able to get those funds from. But this fund believes in people and believes in the progress of our community. Through their REDA certification of the CDFI, those funds will be made available to our community because we've made a small investment. All of these are a small investment, a drop in the bucket, seed money, belief money in each other, in what we know our community can be, and what others may not want us to achieve, but they will not stop us because we are resilient, we are resourceful, and we, together, will persevere and come out of this pandemic stronger and better than ever before. That's why I'm proud to work with the colleagues that I have and the people of Erie County who believe in the betterment of the future. And I applaud all of us tonight for doing something out of the box and something that is going to transform our community into something better, and most importantly, into something better than perhaps when we've been here. And we can make it a better place for future generations to come. With that said, let's continue on with our agenda. Mr. Smith, we now have on our agenda a second reading of Ordinance Number 90. If we could have that in title only, please?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 90, 2021, to create and establish Erie County Rails Future Commission.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I have a lengthy amendment.
Please go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend the face sheet, to add the exhibit that has been provided by our solicitor from 10/26/21. And I would also like to add the following language to number two, "Purpose." The very last line should read, "Provided any purchase of service agreement entered into by the commission of $50,000 or more shall first be approved by the Erie County Council." And finally, to add also to the ordinance that the money will be in a restricted account and released when the board of the Rail Future Commission is seated. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion for amendment by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any additional comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Councilman Rastetter?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that amendment to make the figure $100,000 instead of the $50,000. I don't want to handicap the commission in any way, shape, or form, so I would just go ahead and make that $100,000. I don't believe that they will ever need to spend more than that kind of money all at once. And to tell you the truth, I don't see it as spending money with that commission. I see it as a real investment, one that will bring money back, and probably by the time the commission folds itself up, after it's all said and done and taken care of its objectives, that it will yield back more money than what we give them. So...
Thank you.
That's all I can say.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Clear, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your amendments or not?
At this time, I am going to stick with the $50,000 because that's what was agreed upon prior to the council meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
So is Sir Talarico.
But since the council person has made an amendment, there should be, or if anybody on council should have the opportunity to second.
Yes, I understand I was asking for a friendly amendment to her amendment. Thank you. So, Mr. Rastetter, if you would like to make that as a standalone amendment to further amend the amendment, as it hasn't been accepted as a friendly amendment, you can do that if you're making it as a motion, and then we would seek a second.
Well, yes, I would. I would like to make that a motion.
Okay. So we have an additional amendment to increase the amount to $100,000? Is there a second? Okay. Seeing none, then we go revert back to the original motion because it failed to have a second. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Councilman Shank?
Just real quick, this is not about control. It's about making sure that we on council have checks and balances, that we are using the taxpayers' money, which is gambling money, which is still taxpayers' money. We're not saying that they will go out and buy a brand-new train with this, but, you know, just like when we were kids, we have to talk to the parents, and we are the keeper of the purses on council. And all this is, is just to make sure that we don't go buy a gold-plated locomotive from Wabtec. I know you guys wouldn't, but it's just an example. But again, I support this $50,000. All this is, is just pretty standard, like throughout county government, checks and balances, making sure everybody's on the same plate. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes, I would just like to add to that. I am sure that people are not expecting the commission itself to build railroad tracks or buy trains. We don't own the tracks. The commission doesn't own the tracks. We don't even own Union Station. It's privately owned. We don't own Amtrak trains. We don't have jurisdiction over them, although we certainly can petition and we can make requests and so forth. So the types of things that they will be spending the money on are things that I think should be, it should be accountable to our citizens, and it should be accountable, accountable therefore, to county council, and it should be in keeping with the rest of the administrative code and so forth, purchasing code for Erie County that limits it to $25,000, which is what I would have preferred, but the consensus is $50,000, so I will support that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we then have a roll call vote on the Ordinance Number 90 as amended?
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Congratulations to this community and to the vision of this council and this administration for investing this money in a transformative way, as these gaming funds were intended to be and intended for us to do. This is the next step, and I am going to ask council members to begin getting ready for their appointments. And Mr. Sparver asks you to relay to the county executive for her to get ready for sending down her names to names for appointments. And I would like to move that forward at our next council meeting. I do want to make sure everyone understands that the actions that we've taken tonight are with supplemental appropriation of 2021 funding, and so these funds could lapse by the end of the year and need to be re-appropriated. So we want to continue to move this forward in earnest and make sure that we don't miss out on the opportunities as the federal government continues to move forward on their infrastructure bill. So, congratulations tonight to Erie County, Pennsylvania. Mr. Smith, may we have a reading in title only of Resolution Number 41, please? And we're gonna continue, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, we're gonna continue to keep this table so we don't need to attempt to move it off the table. And that concludes our old business, and we're keeping that on the table. We're now at new business. And under new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to handle items D through I in one motion and vote. And then I would like to move item B to a second reading. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the remainder of the agenda by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to amend the remainder of the agenda?
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of Ordinance Number 91 in title only?
A first reading of Ordinance Number 91, 2021, 2021 General Fund Budget, Revised Expenditures of $25,000 for Increased Election Costs.
So moved.
We left that at a first. No, that's okay. Next on our agenda is a second reading of Ordinance Number 92. Mr. Smith, if we could have that in title only?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 92, 2021, amending the Administrative Code of 2021, Article II, Section 543F, and incorporating the Erie County Rails Future Commission.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I'm sorry. It's late.
I'll answer to Carl, too.
Yo?
Hey.
Okay. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would actually like to make the same amendments that I made to item D on old business. I would like to amend the face sheet. And I would like to add the exhibit that was presented by our solicitor on 10/26 of 21. I would also like to add the same language that I added to number two in purpose. The last line reading, again, "Provided any purchase or service agreement entered into the commission of $50,000 or more shall first be approved by Erie County Council." And then finally, that the money be placed in a restricted account and then only released when the board is seated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have an amendment of this particular item by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendments?
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a vote on, excuse me, Ordinance Number 92 as amended?
Mrs. Clear?
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, if you would, I'm sorry, if you would like to have further discussion, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to make a comment because it's important that it's recorded. I initially voted no on the million dollars. I won't rehash all the reasons why. But I'm of the mindset that wants something this body. Because whether it passes 4.3 or 5.2 or 7.0, it's this body. Once we've chosen to do something, I just feel that it's my responsibility to help and do all the more I can to help it succeed. And so while I change my vote because of the, I want my colleagues to know that I really appreciate the work that you did and your due diligence. It's never easy for me to change the administrative code. I'm always apprehensive. I want to thank our solicitor because I think he's given us great advice. And because of that advice, I'm able to move forward with that belief that we should do all that we can to help it succeed. The commission will be seated and the administrative code will be amended. I just wanted it on the record.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Councilwoman Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too will be voting in favor of amending the administrative code. And while that may seem illogical on the face, in fact, the ordinance was passed and as such is law. And therefore, amending the administrative code is more of a housekeeping duty than anything else. It must be done. It must be in accordance with what is passed by the majority of council. So I will be voting in favor of amending that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we now have a roll call vote?
An Ordinance 92 is amended. Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 47 in title only, please?
Resolution 47, 2021, approving the intergovernmental transfer agreement between the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Long-Term Living, and the County of Erie.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 47, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of, just in title only, of the resolution number and the parcel number for items D through I?
You sure about that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if everyone wants to stay till 10.
I just ordered pizzas.
Resolution 48, 2021, exonerating outstanding county taxes, fees, and interest on parcel number 33-016-034.2-003.73. Resolution 49, exonerating outstanding taxes, fees, and interest on parcel number 33-056-242.3-101.39. Resolution 50, exonerating taxes, fees, and interest on parcel 33-056-242.3-101.39.
You inverted the parcel number. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You started out right, but you ended the last number on 50 and you read it for 49. Our chairman's fault. He should read every one of them. You know what I'm saying?
I do know. The internal content is...
Just to make sure everybody is aware, we never make a mistake on councils.
Except where we've been here five hours.
I think you're sleepy.
Yes, the parcel number on 49 should have ended 33-016.034.1-003.82. Point 39 is in fact correct for Resolution 50. Resolution 51, exonerating taxes, fees, and interest on 3967 West 12th, parcel 33-026-159.0-002.57. Resolution 52, exonerating outstanding taxes, fees, and interest on parcel 33-016-019.0-268.49. Resolution 53, exonerating taxes, fees, and interest
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have a motion by Councilwoman Shouerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions? Would anyone like Mr. Smith to reread everything again?
No.
Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On those resolutions, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is Resolution Number 54. Mr. Smith, if we could have that reading in title only, please?
Yes.
When you're ready.
Resolution 54, 2021, approving revisions to the bylaws of the Human Relations Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Councilman Horton?
Man, I'm glad this is the last agenda item. I'm going to vote no against this because we've had, aside from our solicitor's comments in caucus, I just watched two advisory board members from, to the commission come and ask us not to. And so I won't be supporting this. I do think it's putting the cart before the horse. I'll vote opposed.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Councilwoman Rennie?
Thank you, Chairman. I too will be voting no on this. I realize that the HRC has already approved the bylaws, but I have some concerns about them. And in light of those concerns and concerns stated by constituents for that matter, I would like to hold off on approving this. And so I will be voting no.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clear?
I also have a lot of reservations on voting for this due to the information that was provided to us. However, I do know that Councilwoman Shouerman has spent countless hours for five months. And I would like to acknowledge that, number one. But helping with the Erie HRC Commission Advisory Board, you know, some of the language that is dated needs to be changed. And I wonder if we would be better off tabling this item. I wanted to look at Ms. Shouerman. Rather than it failing, would it be a better idea to table this? So that, because otherwise, we would not be able to vote on it again, I believe.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. And if you don't mind me interceding in your comments.
Go ahead.
Which were comments that I was going to make at the end, is that this discussion was had in the caucus room. And we have a remedy to make any changes as suggested to us by our solicitor because these have to go back to the original ordinance. And the ordinance can then be changed. So we do have the remedy to continue to move this forward, but resolve it. And that was the middle-of-the-road approach that was taken to table the ordinance and then look to pass this resolution and make those changes to the passage of the final ordinance. Were there any other?
Oh, no.
Was that?
No, thank you very much. Yes, I remember our discussion. I didn't know if this changed anything for anyone, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to, and I guess I wanted to see where Councilwoman Shouerman felt on this, too.
I think we agreed in caucus that we could go ahead and pass this and it could be amended after our solicitor makes corrections to the ordinance so that this will coincide with the ordinance.
Because we, that's right, because we've tabled the ordinance. Okay. Thank you very mu, I'm sorry, I'm almost done. I just wanted to thank Ms. Shouerman because I do trust your, I trust everything you have done. And thank you all very much for your attention to the detail.
I also do apologize for the wording that you found in there because I thought we had corrected that, but apparently not. So I do apologize for that.
Thank you. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Horton, did you want to make further comment?
Yes, just further comment. Since it's been stated that we agreed on that, that was in caucus, that was not my understanding. I do know that it was suggested. But I don't believe we, although we straw pulled something else, I don't think we took a poll on that. I think it was just discussion. And so I definitely won't be voting yes in the affirmative for this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to make a few comments and questions. The Human Relations Commission falls underneath the authority of county council. The members of the Human Relations Commission serve as commissioners. They are judges to cases that come forward before the commission. The budget of the Human Relations Commission does not fall under the commissioners. It falls under the staff. And who they report to is the Erie County Clerk of Erie County Council. He is the supervisor. And although there are things that all of us agree need to be changed, we had come up with a remedy. And my understanding is that there was a consensus, if not a straw poll, a consensus of counsel to the compromise of tabling the ordinance, passing the bylaws, and then changing what needs to be changed, adding that to the ordinance as amendments, and then finalizing the ordinance. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 54, Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
No.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. That concludes the business of Erie County Council this evening. Our next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will be held Wednesday, November 10 at 4:00 p.m. in Room 114. And will also be held by Zoom and in person. And the next regular meeting of county council will be Tuesday, November 16 at 6:00 p.m. here in Room 117. We thank all of you for your patience tonight, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move.